Well, with that in mind, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Brian Geezy.
Present.
Doug Huestead.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Here.
Liam Hahn.
Present.
And I am present.
Stand for the Bledge Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time we'll have a virtue card reading.
Today's virtue, or tonight's virtue, is respect. We show respect by speaking and acting with courtesy. We treat others with dignity and honor the rules of our family, school, and nation. Respect yourself and others will respect you. You are practicing respect when you speak courteously to everyone, take special care of the belongings of others, are receptive to the wisdom of elders, honor the rules of your family, school, and nation, expect respect for your body and your rights, treat others with dignity, affirmation. I am respectful. I honor the wisdom of elders. I treat others and myself as we deserve to be treated.
Thank you, Pat. Very, very good. Board of Education Guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. That's for prior. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results and high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to any public comments. No comments. Quiet crowd.
Public comment, Keith?
Hello, Keith says hello. Well. We walk moment open comments at any time. We'll move on today. Showcasing schools and student learning. Today, we're going to have a presentation from our Central Science System Academy. Michael Wilson will be presenting a project on his maple syrup. The floor is yours, young man.
Okay, so I made this presentation on a project that I did last school year of maple syrup, and I made this presentation to show the steps of how to make maple syrup. So, the first step is finding a tree to tap and tapping it. You want to find a maple tree because the only trees that you can tap are maples and birch. And for best maple tree to tap is maple, sugar maple. But you can just tap regular maple trees. But the way you can tell maple trees apart is the big branches at the top, they'll be really smooth, the bark, and then as it gets down, it gets more rough. And at the top of, at the end of the branches, they'll have little branches really close together. And you want to tap the tree on the south side of the tree because it gets the most sun. And you want the most sun because when the tree gets heated up, it pressurizes everything, and then the sap wants to run up to the branches to grow leaves. So, you want the most sun because it'll flow the most sap. And you want it above a big root, like that's the best, that's the best place to tap because it'll store the most sap. And you don't have to put it on the top of a big root. It's just the best too. You want to tap it about three and a half to four feet off of the ground to give the sap more space. And you want to tap it because first you drill a hole. You want to drill it at a slight upwards angle so that the sap can flow out easier. Then the second step is collecting the sap. You can collect it once or twice a day depending on the temperature. You want to bleach anything that the sap touches because you don't want it to mold or anything. You can keep it up to seven days. And you want it forty-eight degrees or below to keep it cool and so it won't mold or anything. Depending on the temperatures is how much you check it per day. If it's really cold at night, below freezing, and it's forty, forty-five, maybe fifty, that's the best time. That's when you want to check it two times a day because you want the temperatures to be below freezing at night because that's when all the sap goes down to the roots. And then you want it about forty, forty-five degrees during the day because that's when it'll heat up the tree and all the sap will go up. Because the warmer it is, the faster the sap will flow. The next step is boiling. The reason you boil sap is to purify all the sugars because when you boil it, all of the waters come out, evaporate away, so all the sugar is concentrated. And you want the water to be seven degrees above the temperature that water boils at. Water boils at two hundred and twelve degrees. You want to boil the sap at two hundred and eighteen degrees. And that small batch with the propane tank, that probably took me about five hours. And then the big, we made an evaporator, and that's just a stainless steel sink. We boiled down about fifty gallons. That took about two days. Because you keep on adding sap to it. And if, when you do that, you want to keep the sap about two hundred degrees because the key to keeping to boil faster is to keep the boil going. You don't want to stop the boil. And then the next step is your finished maple syrup. And after you're done boiling it, you want to, there's different ways of telling when maple syrup is done. You can use a, I, I'm, yeah, a hydrometer. It's pretty much like, it's a glass tube kind of, and it's small. And there's a piece of paper on the inside of it. Then there's a weight at the bottom. And it comes with a metal container. You fill that up with syrup, and then you put that in there. And it floats to a certain amount, and it's like thirty-five brick. That's how they measure it. And it'll float a certain amount once it gets so thick. And then there's another device where you put a drop on it, and it measures the amount of light that's going through it, that's reflecting through it, and it can tell how thick it is and when it's done. But there's a series of filtering that you can do. We only did two filters. One's smaller, and then one's more, one's thicker, and it'll get everything out. And if you don't, if you don't filter it, there'll be a creamy gunk on the bottom. So you want to get that out, obviously. And then that's maple syrup. I brought some today for you guys to try if you want to. And that's all I have for my presentation.
How much maple syrup were you able to manufacture?
About two to two and a half gallons. It takes about forty gallons of sap to make one gallon of syrup. And we collected about a hundred and twenty gallons, but with us spilling some and everything, we got about two gallons.
So how many trees did you tap?
Like sixteen or twenty. I tapped some trees on the NCRUSA Environmental Learning Loop.
So Michael, would you talk a little bit about how you networked with Humkey? The kids at Humkey and the teachers?
I, I talked to the second grade teachers. And I went out and I tapped a tree to show them how to do it and walk them through all the steps and everything. And they, they, there was the whole second grade that came out, and I tapped two trees for them to see. And then later on, a couple weeks later after that, I went over to Humkey and I took my boiling station with the bucket and the turkey fryer, and I boiled down some sap, and I made syrup for them to try.
Is it a project you want to undertake next year?
The same project?
Do you want to make more syrup?
Yeah.
You like your product.
Yeah.
Very good.
So I've got a quick question. So what inspired you to do this? Because you hadn't done maple syrup in the past, right?
No, I never have. I, just seeing all the maple syrup bags on the side of the road, and I've always wanted to try it, so.
So do you have a lot more French toast and pancakes at your house nowadays? Good for eggs, too.
Sausage, yeah.
I'm sure family members are, it's probably a hot commodity, right?
Yeah.
You're going to have to get your own private label. But thank you very much.
Does anybody want a sample of that? He brought it.
I'll try a sample.
He brought some for you.
I know, I like that. Should I move on? What, I know you'd, you'd want it, once you did it, you'd say, oh gosh, I want more.
That's, you don't get to go back.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's for the best.
Wow, that's good stuff.
That's what's known as portion control.
Hey, Michael. I've got a maple tree, my son, this big around, or bigger. Would that, is that too big or?
You want to have about eleven and a half, eleven and a half to twelve inches of width to be able to put one tap in it, so it fits two feet long or two feet wide.
This thing's like fifteen to twenty feet in circumference.
Because you do multiple times, yeah.
Really?
Because for every twelve or two, you pull that tap.
You want to tap my, you want to tap my tree next year?
Sure.
He's going to ask for a cut.
You just give me a quart, not be happy. It is good, man. It is good stuff.
Sounds like a great project.
Thank you. Jamie, thanks for bringing it in.
You're welcome.
And I know I took a lot of family support to complete the project and that.
Well, it sounds like it's going to be a tradition now at the house.
On the weekends and stuff?
I mean, it wasn't all during the school day to type projects. Yeah. Really nice commitment.
Way better than Aunt Jemima.
Well, with the sweet taste in my mouth.
Thanks for buttering them up for us.
We're going to, we're going to move on to Jen Jackson and Rachel Severs. College and career report cards.
So, last year, Rachel, myself, and Corey Anfison, we went and attended the academic and career planning conference that was held in Madison in December. And at that conference, they talked a lot about school report cards. And you guys have seen that DPI report card more than anybody else in this district, I'm sure. One of the things when they were talking about it is things that didn't reflect. And Mishikot High School was actually sharing that they make their own college and career readiness report card. And they had selected indicators of things that aren't on the DPI one. You know, some, a lot of the things on DPIs, we can't change, we can't adjust, we, you know, the, you know, economic status, all those things, those are beyond our control.
And they're very specific to the school. Whereas the stuff that Mishikot talked about were very specific to the students.
Yep. So, we decided, okay, well, I decided, I was like, we're doing this. We are going to do this because I thought that even though our school report card is good, I was like, we're way better than what this DPI report card is saying about us. So I was like, let's do it, college career readiness. We have ACP rolling out. It'd be a great chance to do it with this class of 2017. So Rachel and I, we brainstormed like, what, what do we want to indicate our successes? So you see in front of you what we chose, things that you don't see on that DPI report card. So attendance rate, because if they're here, there's a better chance that they're going to do well as long as they are physically in the building. Co-curricular activities, the value of participating in things. And in that case, we only looked at school-related activities. So anything that took place beyond school, so youth group or anything like that, not actually associated with the school, we did not include, just to see their actual school activities. GPA, we know that's an indicator of success. Employment, that's something that DPI would never look at, is like, are you employed? Are you learning job skills? That's that career readiness. So even if they are flipping burgers at McDonald's, they're learning job skills. They're learning how to be good employees. They're learning things that maybe we cannot teach them in the building. We looked at combinations of co-curricular activity participation and their GPAs. AP and transcribed credit courses, the value of those dual credit options that we do offer to our students, the number of credits they have earned at the time of graduation that we know about, and then their average composite ACT score, as well as what they're planning beyond high school. So once we figured that out, Rachel and I sat down. We had a combination of going through Power School information, so the GPAs, the attendance, all of those kinds of things we were able to pull off of Power School. The rest of it, they did through a survey. So we had them do a Google survey where they actually had to check what activities they were in, if they worked. We were able to pull the AP and the transcribed stuff off of Power School as well, or through our mid-state records, ACT off of Power School, and then what they want to do. And you see that class of 2017, they, they have, they have a lot to be proud of.
Yeah. This was just a nice way as well to look at the successes of not only the class, but the staff that's worked with the class. So many of the other reports that are out there tend to dwell or point out negative things. So this is something that brought a lot of positivity to the hard work that's been put in with this class for the past four years, and even prior to that. We really were surprised at the attendance rate. I mean, that attendance rate for the eighty-nine students that are factored in is amazing. That shows that they wanted to be there. That's, that's a commitment on their part to actually show up to that extent and be a part of the building and the expectations that we have for them while they're there. The part that I think Jen and I were both very surprised by is the number of students who were employed. And that wasn't just a, I babysit on a weekend here or there. That was a consistent minimum amount of work that is structured in some sort of a setting that they relied on that income for some other purpose. So eighty-eight percent of the grade having that commitment outside of school with time management and everything else, that's a great skill that we should be proud of the kids for being able to maintain that. And a lot of times we hear, or I guess I should say I hear, assuming staff other than myself do, but parents worrying about, oh no, I don't want my kids involved in anything. School is their priority. But if you look at the level of engagement and the trend of the GPAs, I mean, four or more activities, that's, in our building, we run clubs during advisory. So that's every single day of the week that we have advisory that they're involved in something. And they're still being able to maintain a three-point-six GPA, that's amazing. That's a B-plus, A-minus average. So the kids are learning how to be a part of things, serve of a higher purpose, as well as maintain their academics and work a job. So they're very multifaceted, and nothing that we've ever looked at before honored that success for them of how busy they really are.
And we always say, especially that freshman-only day that we have at the high school, get involved, it's going to help you, it's going to help you to get involved. Well, now we can say, oh yeah. You're worried, you want to be that four-point-oh? Well, some of these kids had eight. They were in eight activities. When we looked at drama, athletics, I'm going to put FBLA. You know, any of those things, if it was a class, we didn't count it. So if they were in choir, that's considered a course. But if they were in the musical, that's a huge time commitment that they were part of. I mean, just to think that some of these kids were in eight activities. That means they were, most of them were three sport athletes plus other stuff, and a three-eight-eight. So now when those little freshmen walk in and we say, get involved. Get involved. This is how successful you can be. We can be like, well, class of 2017, let us tell you, are you going to be better than the class of 2017?
And within the last four years now, transcribed credit has been a huge concentration for the CTE department in how to bring that opportunity to the students. And right now, this class, I mean, look at the number of credits, and that's not including the forty-two AP sections that they're enrolled in this year because we don't have the results on those AP exams to know if they'll get college credits or not.
And that, that dollar amount there for the college, that's mid-state's dollar amount. So if, if they're going to take that on to a four-year, even if it's just three credits of a gen ed elective, you could have figured that out. That, that's just the flat mid-state, that gives us a ballpark. I'm like, twenty-two grand, guys. For some, we have for sure at least one student that almost has a full semester at mid-state taken care of because of transcribed credits that he took this year. So that's huge for our students to realize they can get that step ahead, whether it be transcribed with our technical college system or the AP option. So, yeah, they had forty-two AP classes.
That aren't figured into that number yet.
We don't know those results yet. We only knew of three credits that had been earned.
Because one of the students took an AP class as a junior. But also the fact that forty-nine of the eighty-nine students that graduated had some type of post-secondary credits when they left our building. And for that change to come up within four years of a department concentrating on that as a purpose is major credit to Jen, Dave, and Laurel because that was them looking at where they could find it, what opportunities they could do. You guys for supporting them through that effort of bringing the classes in, making that connection with mid-state. Mid-state's been great as far as providing the support and the curriculum and checking in. Zhang is wonderful to work with. And the kids are the ones who it pays off for. So we were very pleased to see the results of this. The staff was very pleased when we just gave them a little brief highlight on some of the fast facts that we had found the week after we had done this. And it was just a nice way to.
End the year. It was, it was that positive. Something we weren't, we didn't even think to add, which I kind of thought of later, is industry certification. I know that seven kids in my Microsoft Office class are now Microsoft Office specialists. Laura Cronin had one certified for infant toddler to work in daycare settings. And I think she had nine or eleven kids that are now certified for early assistent childcare. So they, they're now walking with industry certification as well. So that's even something for us to add later on, is are you industry certified, let alone the post-secondary options, too? So it's, it's great.
Because a couple students doing their CNA course over the summer because they wanted to get that in, so they have their certification, so they can look for jobs once they get their license. So the parents are being a part of that commitment, getting them to and from where they need to be. And it's just been great to see everyone come together. And this recognizes that a lot better than what we were looking at through the DPI one.
We also really loved seeing that eighty-five, roughly eighty-five percent are going on to training of some sort, whether it is the military, the technical college, the two-year, or the four-year. We did not factor in National Guard with the military. This is the full-time active-duty military options. Because we figure if you're National Guard, you're probably also going on to schooling of some sort, or you're working. But eighty-five percent are planning on furthering their education in some way, shape, or form. So we're hoping that next year, we're going to compare it. And we'll do it again for the class of eighteen and to see, like, are we moving in the right direction? The hope is, is, you know, some kids are still going to miss, but ninety-nine percent attendance. We would love to just stick at that.
We can maintain that level. We would be very pleased. We're also looking to see what areas the ACP is impacting after a couple of years of running that since this is the first group, and this senior group didn't get much of it. The kids who had Jen last year that were the pilot group had a little bit of a foundation, but otherwise, it was just stuff that they had done during advisory this year. So what they had for an ACP in comparison to what this year's freshman will have. We want to see what spots that we're doing well with and where we can maybe utilize that process a little bit better as well. And this will help us monitor that.
Very good. That's something that many people can be commended on for how well these schools and two of them are standing right there.
And it makes great talking points for graduation speeches.
This is a fantastic tool that you can use over and over with every class. This is fantastic.
Well, even for us, just sophomores going to be juniors, or actually freshmen now that are sophomores, they can start doing transcribed credits. So when we're plugging classes that you get, you know, those students should start investigating. Well, see this dollar amount here? You know, planning those things, being like, okay, AP options, when we're doing course planning for them with their four-year plans, being like, okay, you're thinking the technical college. Well, you should really look at classes A, B, C, D. You know, things like that will be just wonderful for us. And that's where I think the real growth with ACP and this is going to shine through.
And the transcribed options starting next year will be open to sophomore, junior, senior, whereas in the past, it was just junior, senior. So that will also allow the students to pursue more of the certification-type fields that Jen was talking about because some of those, you have to take a certain number of courses in a certain sequence. So they get most of what they need for that certification, but don't have enough room to get all of it. With adding that extra year, hopefully more students can get more certifications.
That's fantastic. So they can kind of dip their foot in the water a little sooner and explore career paths.
And we've had it before where sophomores have taken like my intro to business course. And it's like, well, you're taking a college course, but you're not getting the college credit. Enjoy. But now they'll get it. And I think that was a big eye-opener for mid-state to realize, you know, let's open this up. Younger, we'll get more students possibly earning credits to attend our, you know, our school. So it's a plus for them. Another reason we really wanted to do this is it's marketing. Can't help it. I'm the business teacher. This is marketing. Why are we better? Well, here's why we're better. And I've made it pretty.
She did all the formatting. I can't take credit for that. I was on the data gathering.
You grabbed your attention. One, one thing I was going to, yeah. One thing I was going to share, we, the board, I don't know when it was, within the last month, we were having some conversations. One thing I was gonna share, we, the board, I don't know when it was, within the last month, we were having some conversations and talking about marketing, how can we take some of this information and share it at all the ballgames? You know, how can that get to the announcer somehow, just to be advertising the greatness that, you know, is happening?
This is something we can give prospective families.
Yeah.
This year alone, I had six different prospective families come in and wanna meet with myself and get a tour of the building and be introduced to Keith or Megan. And this is something we can put in that enrollment packet and say, look at the awesome things that your child has the opportunity to be a part of. And I don't know any other school that has locally, that has something like this.
Well, it's copyrighted, you know, it goes as well.
Will this credit to Mishaka, that's where the general idea came from. But we definitely changed some of the things that we looked at because, again, with how close we are to mid-state, that's something that we need to acknowledge and offer up as an opportunity for the students because a lot of them wouldn't have thought to go that avenue. And students are scared to do post-secondary because of the cost of it. Well, this is a great way that they're working with us and we get to help the kids. And if they don't know that, or they can take a couple of these classes and decide, hey, maybe I don't wanna be a childcare teacher or I don't wanna work in business, cause that's not fitting, but they got to sample it without having to put money towards it.
Well, we thank you.
Congratulations. Great information.
Thanks for taking time out of a summer evening.
Yes, indeed. You got a Raptor shirt?
I, I go into your Raptors game, so.
They already did that. We're actually, we were S B doctors with a little middle one, so he came and brought me a little present.
Thank you. Um, why I serve on the Board of Education, oh, excuse me, CWSA, update.
So we have Sharon Vatauski here and she's our, um, business rep, one of the business representatives from Dompert.
Good evening.
Thanks for serving, Sharon.
You're welcome. I've been with the board for about a year.
Yeah.
Um, a couple of things that I wanted to go over, we just had our elections, our terms begin and end in May. Um, so we just had our elections. Um, we were able to have, um, a total of three community members, which is kind of our minimum. Um, so we have Richard Breen, who actually was our chair. He stayed in with the council as a community member. Uh, Nita Purst, who was a, is a retired, uh, school teacher from the district, uh, she's joined as a community member. Um, and Amy Fluno, who was on the, uh, depart, or the CWSA board as a parent member. Her child now is going on to high school, but she agreed to stay on for another year as a community member. Um, now, one of the big news, we have three new parent members. Um, so that's, they're injecting a lot of, uh, a lot of new questions and new life into the board. Um, we have Wendy Brune, Beth Thomas and Michelle Michael. I don't have, like, what their, what ages their students are, I don't know if you have.
You, we don't need to.
Oh, you don't know that, okay.
But thank you.
Yes, so that's just excellent that, uh, uh, we've got a full, full set of the, the parent members. Um, for business members, um, it's myself, uh, Brian Kraus from Solaris. And then we do have one opening in the business, um, area because, uh, Chris Martin from Urco, his term was up. So we are still looking for a, um, another business member for that. Um, Brian Kraus is now our chair for the CWSA Governance Council. Amy Fluno's our vice chair. Wendy, uh, is our treasurer and I'm the secretary. And for the committees, um, one, the academic excellence chair, um, Amy will be the, the governance committee chair. Um, the finance chair is Wendy Brune and the public relations chair is Beth Thomas. So we've got new chair people in those areas, so they will really be injecting some new life into that. So that's, that's good. Um, another item we had, um, would have been, the beginning of June, we had Leah Stramborsky from EAP. Um, at the Governance Council, she was doing a facilitating, uh, 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 role development uh, session where we were looking at the roles of the CDO, CWSA Governance Council, looking at the different, um, subcommittees, also looking at what are the roles of the parents, the students and the Board of Education to make sure that things are, that everyone understands their rules and where there's different boundaries. So we got some really good discussion on that, but we do have more discussion to come with that. But that was, that was good to under, to just bring up, okay, well, who really does this? You know, who has the final say in, in this or that? Cause it's some areas, it's, it was kinda unclear for that. So, um, that's some good development that we're working on there. Um, and the last thing, um, with Wendy being our, our, um, financial person, um, one of the first things that she's taking up is looking at the financial tracking between CWSA and the Board of Education or the district. Um, so she had gotten together with, ooh, Terry Lynn and herself um, to kinda talk about those finances, you know, the accounts, who pays for what, um, what amount has to be signed off. And a lot of that, they were definitely clearing up, um, some misunderstandings or just clarifying things. So I believe they've got a pretty good, um, pack forward on that. They may have some additional items to do, but.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Sharon? I guess I just wanna thank you for your willingness to serve and be an active member of the Governance Council.
Our next meeting, um, we moved the, the June one up, but our next meeting is gonna be July seventeenth. Um, I think it's the day before this meeting, um, and it's at four o'clock, so everyone is welcome to pop in.
Thanks again, Sharon. Have a great night.
Alright, thanks.
Clint, you're gonna get that on our board, board calendar.
Sure. You have more Michael Mabels are up there? Well, that was at the last one. Actually, that's why Sharon agreed to come, cause she could.
Thank you very much. Um, we're moving on to now, why I serve on the Board of Education. And today we're gonna have Mr. Pat Shetland.
Um, the reason I serve on the Board of Education actually started about thirty-five years ago. Cause that was when I coached my first third and fourth grade basketball game. And, or team, I should say. And there's something about helping a kid succeed at something. It just gets to me. And back then, it was teaching a kid how to do a layup, how to shoot a free throw. From there, it evolved to I coached baseball, how to hit a baseball, how to throw a pitch, how to throw a changeup. From there, it moved on to coaching chess. And there's just something about helping a kid succeed at anything that they wanna do. Oh, and it's also, it also included helping them with their, uh, algebraic equations, you know, whatever, you know? It doesn't matter. I get a kick out of it. So my reasons are somewhat selfish. Because I think this is just another step. It's just another way that I can help young people succeed not only in maybe a little thing, but in big things. And if I can have the opportunity to help shape what happens like, you know, at, at, at the high school or at CWSA, if I can have any part in that, I'm all for it. And that is why I serve.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Thank you very much.
It was a fantastic tutor.
He's, he's in recruiting mode already.
Recruiting, we already used him.
Thank you, Pat.
Yep.
Um, we're gonna move on with, uh, communications with the Board of Operational Expectation nine. Um, we have some survey results that we're gonna discuss. Um, there was apparent satisfaction survey sent out that Mr. Whitmore is wanting to speak to.
Yes, I'm just gonna engage the board in conversation around that. And you had in your board packet. So I, I guess to get the conversation started was, would be, you know, what struck you about the data? Um, as you looked at it? You know, what comments do you wanna make about the data? What questions you have that really, I guess, what stood out to you?
We have opportunities. Yeah, that's, you know, there's, there's things certainly to celebrate. Um, but there's also opportunities that, that, uh, surveys like this identify. And it, you know, I believe that this will help guide us in, in areas that we need to improve upon. And of course, you know, it's, it's a benchmark, you know, that we can, we can use and, and, and see where we, where we can move in the future. There's a lot of specific comments, a lot of good, honest feedback from the parents. This is very much appreciated. Participation rate, I think I would like to see more, more participation from the parents. But we did get a good, a good sample number back. Comments specifically, I, I guess, I, any, any board members have any comments or thoughts that they had in looking at it?
One thing that caught my eye is, um, there was one question that every school had the highest percentage of parents that said yes to this question.
You remember the question?
I do. And it was, I would like to be invited to class sessions and/or special presentations of my child's work. Ninety percent, ninety-five percent, every school.
Agree or?
Wanted to be invited, so.
Strongly agree.
And, and that, that's a, that's an important, um, important thing to note because typically, uh, people that want to volunteer, wanna be asked. And, uh, and the first step, I guess, is to invite them to their, their child's presentation, whatever, classroom. And, uh, from there, who knows, maybe they'll end up being a, a strong volunteer for the district, uh, going forward. Otherwise, my other, my other thought was there were, I, when I looked through the survey questions, there were three things that kinda stood out. Uh, one was classroom discipline, one was, uh, opportunities for advanced students. And the third item was, uh, communication between the classroom and the parent or the school and the parent. And then those three things kinda stood out for me.
The discipline issue was, was certainly, uh, one of the things that was, was, was brought up. And I, I'm very pleased to, to really say that we have some active teams addressing that at all levels. And, you know, that's, hopefully we'll, we'll see some real improvement in that. We made some big changes in our schools over the last year, year and a half. And it, it, if the dynamics changed. And I think the way we, we are addressing those dynamics are appropriate and should elicit the results that we, we hope to see. But the, the comments, you know, they do help us, you know? Focus our efforts, yeah. Other thoughts?
I think that Brian's point is right on with the discipline, I feel like much better going into next year with the progress we're making. And I would say that the survey results kinda speak to what we talk about as a board as far as engaging our most talented students. We need to do a better job doing that and this reflects that.
Pat, did you?
That was, well, the one kinda going on with Brian said is, you know, I, I did get to, to sit in this year uh, over at CWSA with the STEM group for quite a, quite a bit, for, for four weeks. And, and, uh, it was, it was pretty cool. And the one comment that struck me with them was, you know, that I was getting from the CWSA parents was that they, they liked the idea of interacting with older kids, you know, that, that there was a mix. You know, but I think, and then on the flip coin, though, some parents didn't care for that. So you get a little bit of both on a survey like this. And, but this, this was one thing that I thought as, as I was looking at it and I was looking at what CWSA had. And if we can incorporate some of that, some of their successes into the regular classroom. Um, I, I also realized that some of the parents at the high school level, with the freshmen coming from the STEM program, were a little upset with the, uh, uh, English, lack of English and writing skills. But I believe that's being. But that's being addressed. That, that is something, see, these things are, these things, we're not just letting it slide, we're, we're, we're dealing with it. So in this case, a survey like this is a good tool, I think, you know?
And I have to say, you know, I was at the last CWSA meeting and they were still referencing at the end of the year, the work. And Keith, maybe you can describe what you did with the CWSA staff at the high school? They were still talking about those results from early in the year when they came over and there were, maybe it was mid-year. But can you talk just a little bit about that?
Sure. I mean, it was early, it was right at about the end of first quarter. Um, it was the first cohort, I guess, to come over from CWSA. And so just surveying the teachers who were working with freshmen about what they were noticing, had the list of here, the students who were in CWSA. And then what had you noticed? We just surveyed for trends, kinda put all of that together, aggregated that. I met with the governing council, um, at CWSA, we talked about that. The staff from CWSA also had come over to the, um, high school and met with all of the students who had been in CWSA, talked to them about what their experience had been, where they, um, how they were doing. And so, and then from that, really had a great conversation with the governance council about what we were noticing. And I think, you know, as a result, there is some pretty significant changes that are being done. So that's.
Thank you.
That's what it was.
Yeah. But, but the, the point I'm making is these surveys, when we look at them and really reflect on them, have impact. So, as a matter of fact, our, our, each of our schools have teams down in the Dells this week doing sale. So they're planning for next year and, you know, this is one of the pieces of data that they've got, you know, as they're doing their work.
Thank you, Mr. Whitmore. And thank you, fellow board members, for your comments. Um, spring sports survey, are we gonna be able to adjust that?
Um, so that survey, it was sent out right at the end of the school year, so about, probably about thirty-four weeks ago. There have only been five responses. And so Megan and I, we were brainstorming about what to do to up the response level. Fall sports, she had a really strong return rate. Winter, you know, was, I think, not as strong. Fall, it kind of has gone down, but, and then with spring, we're not sure. And it honestly, it's not even one sport, it's sporadic. And so there are no, no trends to report on from that. Um, we just need to, I mean, it's just a matter of looking at what would be a better path. And I think there are some tools that we're going to be utilizing, um, that'll actually help with both the parent survey and many of those pieces. And with, uh, counseling, being able to push things out with the survey as well, to push things out to people where they'll be able to take the survey right on their phones as opposed to, you know, right now where it's at. We think that might help with getting a higher return. But right now, quite honestly, the biggest thing we're looking at is how to get a higher return on that survey.
What was the current, what's the current model for?
It's a Google form.
Google form, that's, uh.
That's pushed out by, man.
To the parents or students?
Parents.
Parents.
So, so yeah, so there wasn't, there wasn't enough to report on and, you know, like, Jerry's and the Dells and.
So why don't we?
Do you think surveying? Do you think survey, I think it might be an easier tool for them to utilize, or you're just going to evaluate different tools?
I don't know. I think it's getting a different path that allows for a quicker return.
What should tell about your plan, the, the new tool?
Well, so utilizing Parent Square, which is a tool that we can send out via text, text and email, and then that way people would get it, it would come up right on the text message, literally you click on the link and you jump right into the survey, and I think that will get us a higher return, or at least that's what we're, that's our hypothesis. We're not too sure what, you know, what other reason there would, there would be. So, so that's.
But we'll talk more about that in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe, do we need, you know, maybe one thing we can note for the parent satisfaction survey, you know, we really didn't have a lot of questions. I've touched on some of our extracurriculars. The return rate was higher on that survey, on the survey.
Well, that's also hundreds, you know.
Right, it's hundreds, but, you know, if we want feedback on our, you know, our performance in arts and athletics and, and, you know, you know, pos, you know, some of the things that we do with, you know, our extracurriculars, FPLA and our things, that make you some really good information out there, but we need that feedback, but in the lack of feedback, we can't make informed decisions.
Are the responses anonymous?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. I didn't know if it being tied to a Google form, if it recorded to.
I mean, you have to identify a sport.
Sure.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they're anonymous.
All right, so we'll, we'll get back to the board on that.
It's very, very discouraging, but.
Let's just, we'll look at different ways of working at it.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Spring sports survey. Operational expectations, learning environment, treatment of students, operating expectation number five. Each month or on a, on the calendar basis, the board is, is examining the operational expectations within policy governance. We had an opportunity to meet this last Thursday to discuss this, this operational expectation. This was one that was originally scheduled for the May meeting, but we pushed it off to the June meeting, so we could, could, could dig into it a little deeper. So I'd like to have a, a brief discussion about our, our, our meeting and our findings The policy statement, annually the board shall assure that district administrator has established and is maintaining a learning environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive to effective learning. A district's self-evaluation will be completed to include a table that outlines the current initiatives as well as documentation to support elements of policy, operational expectation of five, learning environment forward slash treatment of students. And the number one, the number one thing that we identified, that was identified here by administration was maintain a climate that is characterized by support and encouragement for high student achievement. And there is numerous programs that have been identified in supporting this, in this role. One of them is a responsive classroom. This is implemented at Humke and being introduced at AMS. This supports and encourages high in student, high student achievement by intentionally managing the socio-emotional environment of school. Standard-based grading at Humke. The list goes on and on. I guess at this point, I'd like to ask the board if, based upon our conversation Thursday night, do we find ourselves to be in compliance with this policy? Or do we, and do we know, or do we know compliance with exceptions? And something new that we're gonna be, we added to this, this review process is talking about strength, strengths and weaknesses of this policy. Annually, we look at this, and it's, it's really key for us to note weaknesses and strengths, celebrations, so that, you know, when that annual review comes up, we can, we can take a look at this and, and identify, you know, where, have, have we done well and have weaknesses been addressed? So, I'll open the floor up.
Well, from our meeting on.
Thursday.
Thursday. From our meeting on Thursday, there, I, I did capture some notes with respect to responsive classroom training and, and that philosophy, that we would also include that or incorporate that into the high school. We made a note about admin guidelines for discipline at the high school, that those should be addressed. Also standard-based grading at AMS in the high school. We currently have it in process at Humke. We made a comment about adding the at-risk students to the critical care list that is mentioned in the, in the report. And we made a comment about adding the responses to the Q-12 teacher survey as a benchmark for feedback to this monitoring tool. And we also talked about amending the policy language. That's in process right now. We're setting up a meeting to start to look at the language of the, of this policy. We don't have any final timelines for that yet, but those are some things that we talked
The question being then, do we find ourselves in compliance with policy OE5? And/or in compliance with exceptions? Just some of the notes that, you know, I identified, you know, strength, and I, this, this is, I'd rather, I'd rather determine if we're in compliance and note exceptions before we talk about strengths or weaknesses, unless there's a, do you agree, disagree?
Yeah, I agree. You know, we've got exceptions.
Okay, let's talk about our exceptions then.
You think Doug captured him with his note?
I think he did.
I think the other night, he was collecting thoughts.
Right, and.
So was, and I think Diana.
You had it, and you took.
Well, I had a little bit of it, I didn't keep up on the, but I'll.
Right, and, and there's some other things that I, but I think, you know, some of those, some of those were exceptions, and I think we gotta know, make it, make a, a strength or weakness versus a exception. Were all of yours basically exceptions, or were there some change?
Well, no, I think during our discussions, I think some of them were definitely ideas to make the feedback to the monitoring tools more robust, like adding the teacher survey.
Q-12, yeah.
That's obviously something to make the feedback more robust.
Right, yeah.
So it's providing more evidence to support the policy?
Right, right.
I mean, yeah. So how do you determine whether we're in compliance? If we're not in compliance, you know, I don't, I didn't sense that we felt we were out of compliance, or I don't sense that the board felt.
No, no. I think we, I think we found ourselves to be in compliance with this policy.
With these suggestions.
And with suggestions which are, to me, identifying the strengths and weaknesses. That's what I took away from our, our discussion, we felt.
With the understanding we're gonna rewrite it.
Right, but, you know, there were some very, I mean, administrations would be commended on development, and the work that's been done in this, in this area. And, you know, I, I really, my finding would be that we're in compliance at this point. I can't note any, I didn't think we noted any exceptions. But we can talk about strengths and weaknesses.
Right. Well, I would, I would move that we're in compliance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by eight.
Eight.
All those not in favor. So moved, let's talk about some strengths and weaknesses. One of the things that was, I'm just gonna mention this, one of the things that the administration did was conduct the Gallup Student Poll, and this was issued to all grades by a Q-12, approximately 330 students. And one of the, you know, there's some positives in here, some negatives, but one of the things that was identified that was that there was a number of students that were actively disengaged. And that's a, that's a real issue that, you know, we need to address, and it's, you know, I'm really glad that a Gallup poll was administered and that that was identified. So really, you know, I would say a weakness that we have right now with regards to this policy is, is our, is our, our student engagement. And I guess I would just note that as a, as a weakness, and something that, you know, I know you guys are gonna, that it's gonna be addressed, you, you already have some things in there. Another, another weakness that, that we had talked about a little bit was, we, we implemented a lot of changes over the last year to our district, inclusion, co-teaching, and there was a lot of, you know, a lot of information, and one of the things, communication, teacher buy-in in support of changes in curriculum. There was, there was a lot of top-down curriculum involved, but I think that that was, that was necessary and appropriate for, for what needed to be done and accomplished. It, it was difficult, and I'm sure it was very difficult for many of our teachers. And that really comes down to communication and, and time, you know, I feel that will And, you know, this is the first time that we as a board discussed this, and I would welcome, you know, you know, Brian, Mr. Black, if there's comments on, on what, what we're identifying, if you feel that we're way off base in our interpretation, please do not hesitate to challenge us on that.
I think, again, we made several changes in curriculum as necess, as, as we've had discussions for several years about here's trends and here's areas we're doing, and as we're understanding the best ways to go ahead and set up, and part of this is, it's a challenge for everybody in the fact that academically speaking, as far as standards and those things, the bar certainly is much higher. And we've, in the process of adapting our curriculum system of not just the what we're teaching, but the how we're teaching, to me that is, is a change, and it's painful across the board.
And I think you did an excellent job in identifying, you know, that's one thing that we did talk about.
And, and I just, I have to note for, it's certainly a couple, the people here feeling the brunt of that discomfort are, are teachers, especially the ones who have been doing, and again, this is not to imply that they've been teaching badly or doing things in previous years. It's as, as times change and as we have, as we're having a better understanding of what techniques and what curricula actually are research tested to make a difference, that's what we're adjusting her still. And it's, all change is messy, but the trick is, and I appreciate the goodwill and the work that's all, and one thing that I've come through the process, and it's, it's not stopping, again, we're putting in a new half curriculum next year, and we're doing additional things as we're wanting to make sure we're not leaving our parents behind, we're not leaving our teachers behind, and that's part of it, where a lot of our conversation is right now. But this process is one that, as all teachers involved are trying to do what's best for kids.
Absolutely.
And really, that's, that certainly maps in, and it's one of the big things that really is our, you know, as Pat was talking about, his reason for being involved with the school board is the exact same reason every teacher's involved in.
Absolutely.
As well. And we appreciate the, and we've seen a roll, and we've seen, and we've seen early returns on these things, and that's, that's been an exciting note.
And one thing that should be noted is that any weaknesses or strengths that we identify are no, are not criticisms.
Oh, no, they're what we're seeing, and it's a matter of.
We want that level of trust.
Decision.
Yep.
I don't know if this fits into this particular, particular category, but didn't we discuss guest teachers as well, witnesses with communication?
And with a lot, with a lot of the incentives and, or with a lot of the programs that we have, you certainly, guest teachers that enter our district, there's a steep learning curve in what they need to be able to, to do that are different than most districts, because I do believe that we have set our bar higher and implemented other changes, changes that other school districts haven't, that some guest teachers may find more difficult, which would require them to be more prepared. And, you know, that's something that. Where did we find that? I think it was just really with, you know, are the, are the, are the guest teachers trained in responsive classrooms and how to address behaviors or situations, and that, yeah, that would be there.
That came out in other policies too, so we're addressing.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and they learned just communication, parent concerns, and consist, and, and consistency in learning and understanding of discipline policies. And again, that, that has been noted before, and it's actively being worked on. And the strengths I don't, the strength I identified was per, the curriculum standards alignment was a real strength. That's what I had for my notes on strengths and weaknesses.
Any others?
This was the first time we did it as a group, and it really helped us as a board to really delve into this more deeply. And I think it'll help us, you know, it gives us a real firmer grasp, and we appreciate the work that you guys, that the administration put into the document, and I think it, you know, it'll help us be able to do our job more effectively.
Can I just make one clarification based on the statement that Doug made on one of the things about standard-based grading, just because this has been an on-again, off-again topic for the last probably nine years that I've been tracking on those type of areas, that the Humke initiate, Humke is going over to standard-based grading, and the primary impetus behind that is a teacher direction. The teachers at Humke said this is something that we see as valuable, and we want this, and it came to us, and we work to find a way to make that happen. And at the following year, grades four and five have started indicating that that is something of their interest. However, we're not going to outkick our punt coverage.
I brought that up, so the board is aware of that, that they see that as something that they want.
But I just, as long as we're having it out there in the middle and we're, for our areas of things to worry about, what's coming down the pipes, it's one of these things that having, this is one area that we, really helping, working hand-in-hand with our teachers is vital, to make sure that this isn't something that is diluting their, the amount of, there's enough energy to be working full board everything. We want to not have that diffused any more than necessary.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, I think what we talked about at the meeting was, we realize that there are a lot of initiatives, but address the most important ones first, put a timeline to the rest of them.
Yeah. And this is the first time that we, we looked at it in this way, and, you know, I, I think it'll be easier for us. it'll be easier for us as we move through. And I, so I think we're, we found ourselves in compliance. Motion was made. We talked about the strengths and weaknesses. Any other comments on that, gentlemen? One thing that I wanted to mention for under-board district administrative relations. We recently completed our annual summative evaluation of our district administrator. And this was, this, this evaluation was done on the, under the policy governance model. And it looked at the operational expectations and results, policies that we developed. It was a very, very good meeting. We're in a good place. And it reinforced that, you know, when we talk about these on a monthly basis, why we need to really identify, you know, where we are on this, because the next time that we look at this as a board will be the annual evaluation. So, what we talked about right here, we won't look at it again. Well, I'm sure we'll, your reports about it, but we as a board, when we evaluate this from a year from now, this is our baseline on what is documented here under policy governance. And so, that's, it's a very robust document, and I think as we move forward, they're going, like you say, you're going to look at it under the policy. You're going to take it into the policy committee and possibly look at some things, but.
And that meeting, that's been set.
Yeah. We're very, very glad and fortunate to have Terry here and.
Thank you.
Look forward to many, many more.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And, you know, we were, we were pretty kind, yeah.
Well, I don't know about that.
No. Thank you very much, Terry, for taking my hand. We like you. And we need, now I know why we want to talk about it. We have to, as a board, make a motion to accept, accept the summary evaluation of the district administrator. We need a motion to accept that.
So.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. Okay. At this point, we have the consent agenda. One note I want to make on the consent agenda is that we're going to take the employment out of the consent agenda and talk about it in closed session. When we come out of closed session, we'll take the appropriate measures at that point for employment. Within the consent, other items within the consent agenda. Do we want to talk about it? Anybody have, we, we definitely want to speak to donations.
Well, on behalf of the district, you know, the folks that are retiring and leaving on, leaving for other opportunities in their careers, certainly we thank them for their years of service.
Absolutely.
So, we've got two retirements and then several resignations. So, retirements, David Mont, after many years, does anybody know? I think it's 28 years.
28 years.
Michael, Mike Cum was close to.
32.
30, yeah, 32 years. And then resignations, Laura Cronin, family consumer science teacher. She has moved on to do some different things. She's going to still teach, but part-time in Wisconsin Rapids, and then she's looking at doing some other things. Carla Leonard, English teacher at Nikus High School is moving on. Gerald Reapers, the lead teacher at Nikusra Community Schools, pursuing other aspirations. Kendra Shumansky, that was in the district for quite a few years at Humkey, special ed. Teresa Masonic, second grade at Humkey, and Elizabeth John?
First.
Oh, first grade. Humkey first grade. That's right. That's an error. Elizabeth Johnson, third grade at Humkey, and, and she's moving on. So, thank you. And thank you from, on behalf of the board.
Yeah. Thank you.
For the service.
Yeah. We want to thank them for their service. Okay. Donations, backpack for kids, $65 from Bethland Lutheran Church Women in Mission. $1,500 for St. English Church in Wisconsin Rapids from their annual empty bowls event. $170 from Sacred Heart Collections. $40 anonymous. And then $50 for the Books for Buses program, Roger Wilcox. We would like to thank, thank them for the bottom of our hearts for the donations to that program. Thank you very much.
This backpack for kids comes up every month, and for the listening public, this is a really terrific program that our academy school kids have put together. It provides meals for families that need food during the weekends. We provide breakfast and lunch for the students during the weekdays, but on the weekends, they may not have anything to eat, so they might go from Friday lunch until breakfast on Monday before they get a decent meal. And the backpack for kids provides meals for the families that really need that. It's a tremendous program. How many do we provide every month?
Thirty-three, I think.
Thirty-three.
It's a tremendous amount of work that they put in.
It's really grown. And that Books for Buses, just to educate people on that, there was a grant, I think, written, or we got money from the town of Rome for an idea, the, the kids that ride out, ride out to Rome, they're on the bus the longest. So, we thought about, we, somebody came up with the idea of putting books on the buses. So, some lady made these, kind of these pouches that hang over the seats, and so the books get put in those pouches, so the kids get on the bus, and there's books right there for them to read on their trip home. So, it's really worked out well. As a matter of fact, I know John is working with somebody to, to make more. So, it's really been a get. So, it looks like it's taking off, and Roger Wilcox is helping out with that. So, yeah, it's a great idea.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda with the exception of employment. Should I select the, yeah. Is that I asked for it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Before we go into closed session, I just want to mention, mention some future meetings and agenda items. We're going to have a joint Board of Education and City Council meeting on June 22 at 5:30 PM. July 13, Board Workshop. We're going to be reviewing operational expectations that we're going to be talking about in our next July meeting. And at, that's about as far as we need to go right now, I think. Okay. At this point, I'd like consideration of motion to adjourn in the closed session pursuant to section 19.85, 1C, to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date, performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to discuss an employee's compensation.